Ladies and gentlemen, I want it to call to order the town meeting. Today is the 22nd, the time is 9:35. We have a warrant under court's present. The town is out of this storm. Hey, I'm Paul Bassler, and follow on this line. Can everybody hear me? If somebody can't hear, it's up to difficulty. We have the monitors on the side, but at the audio table, there's also handheld listening devices. There's about twelve of them. So if you have trouble hearing, go over to the audio table and they can assist you with the individual handheld device. The warrant hasn't been previously declared and properly noticed with the constable's return of service. As tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. At this point in time, I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. At this point in time, I'd like to take a brief moment of silence for those who have asked and for those residents who continue to find strength, resilience, and courage to endure against these challenges in that circumstance. Thank you. I'd also like to take a moment to thank both the Kingston Police Department and the Kingston Fire Department for being present here today. Thank you. The rules of town meeting. Town meeting is run at a time and our role will be ours. If you wish to address town meeting, just step to the microphone, wait to be recognized, state your name and address. If you're seated from this pole to over here, you can exit to the far side. Come down to the end. If someone's at the microphone, just wait to be added to their speaking. When you're at the microphone, there's hand wipes, there's masks. If you need to remove your mask, you can do so to speak at the microphone. If you're comfortable speaking with a mask, I'd ask you to keep it on. If you have a thick mask and you'd like to keep a mask on, there's paper ones available. There's also, after each person speaks at the microphone, there's wipes at both microphones here and here. You can just wipe at the microphone to make it clean for the next person. When you're at the microphone, you've got to get close to the microphone or it can't hear you. If you're far back, it can't pick up your voice. Please maintain social distancing while approaching the microphones. Please keep comments to one to two minutes. You may approach the microphone a second time, but only with new information, and please keep these comments to under one minute. I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. Motions to amend may be made, but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raises issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, or integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interfere with your ability to hear, speak, or participate in town meeting, please yellow question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you're trying to speak at the microphone. Please do not move chairs and take conversations outside. Please try to keep your mask on at all times, but you may remove them to speak at the microphone if necessary. I hope to continue to have spirited debate and that this meeting both support and challenge the issues that are presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you may not debate and then make the motion. Please be respectful to, please be respectful and remember, everyone, it's okay to have different opinions. Does everyone understand the rules? Can everyone still hear me clearly? Hopefully, next in the fall, we'll be back at the school. I know that it amplifies in here and I apologize for that. Bathrooms. If you need to use the bathroom, you have to go through the bat down the side. Please don't come up by the stage to cut through. And everyone just take a moment to see where the exits are. I'd also like to announce that there are openings on the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Board, and the Waging Personnel. If you're interested, please contact myself, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator. And we're ready for the open motion.
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address town meeting. Kate Federoff, Town Council. Keith Hickey, Town Administrator. Matthew Darsh, Water Department Superintendent. Robert Monahan, Waste Water Department Superintendent. Jason Silva, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Carol McCoy, Finance Director, Town Accountant. Tina Betty, Human Resource Manager. Gloria Mitchell, Assistant to Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen. Valerie Massar, Town of Duxbury, Town Planner.
Is that good? All those in favor?
All in favor.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Unanimously. As you've seen from the materials that were provided on the website we had today, to expedite the meeting to address those matters that require action but tend to generate little or no debate, I'm going to entertain a single motion which removes several articles at once. I will read the article. If a member of the town meeting raises and states "hold," the item will be removed and will be debated in the normal course. Thereafter, I will move the articles which have not been held in a single motion. So to be clear, this is going to be for Article Number One. Committee Reports. Article Number Three, Authorized Revolving Funds. Article Number Five, Water Department Enterprise Budget. Article Number Seven, Waste Water Enterprise Budget. Article Number Eight, Renewable Energy Enterprise Budget. Article Eighteen, Employment Liability Reserve Fund. Article Nineteen, Funding of Post-Employment Health Insurance Liability Fund. Twenty, Transfer Funds to Stabilization Fund. And Twenty-three, Chapter Ninety Funding. So I'm going to call them out one more time, and if you want them to be debated, just call out a "hold" and I will remove it from the consent agenda. If you do not call a "hold," then it will be moved as one article. Article One, Committee Reports. Article Three, Authorized Revolving Funds. Article Five, Water Department Enterprise Budget. Article Seven, Waste Water Enterprise Budget. Article Eight, Renewable Energy Enterprise Budget. Article Eighteen, Employment Liability Reserve Fund. Article Twenty-two, Funding of Post-Employment Health Insurance Liability Fund. Article Twenty, Transfer Funds to Stabilization Fund. Article Twenty-two, Chapter Ninety Funding.
I think you missed, you missed number this, nineteen, so make a family amendment out of nineteen, isn't it?
That's right. I'm sorry. Just to be clear, that was Article Nineteen, Funding for Post-Employment Health Insurance. Twenty, Transfer to Stabilization Funds. And Twenty-three, Chapter Ninety Funds. Seeing no "holds," do I have a second on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Ooh.
Takes us to Article Four. No, hold on one second. Article Four.
Are you going to?
I'm going to wait.
Good morning. Wow, this has been a crazy year.
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Deborah McLean, Finance Committee, sorry. As we're closing out the current fiscal year, I'm reminded of the unique circumstances we found ourselves last year as we were doing the budget. With the onset of the pandemic, we were forced to make some drastic changes to reflect the expected negative impacts of COVID. We were able to reinstate a good portion of these reductions at the special town meeting in December and again with the proposed budget this year. However, while a sense of normalcy is beginning to return, we need to recognize the continued uncertainty revolving regarding COVID's impact on the town finances for the foreseeable future. I would like to thank all the department heads, boards, committees, and administration for the hard work and compromises necessary to produce the balanced budget we present to you today for your consideration. The fiscal year 2022 proposed budget is approximately $47.5 million, a 1.8 million reduction from the current adjusted fiscal 21 budget. However, I would be remiss if I did not point out two factors that contribute to this reduction. First, the exclusion of the 1.8 million non-town net metering and a $900,000 reduction in debt service. In order to present an apples-to-apples comparison for you today, when excluding both previously mentioned line items, the proposed budget represents a 2% increase in departmental expenditures year over year. If all warrant articles funded through raise and appropriation are approved today, then the 2022 budgeted department expenditures would increase 3% compared to the current fiscal year. We find ourselves with a solid free cash position of $2.8 million. As the town has a sizable deferred capital project list to address, we will vote today on funding nearly 1.2 million of these projects through free cash. If all articles today funded through free cash are approved, the town will have a remaining free cash balance of nearly $845,000. While this is lower than we would desire, we anticipate the town will regenerate additional free cash by June 30th. As I close my remarks, I would like to ask you to be mindful of the unforeseen financial difficulties that fiscal year 2022 and beyond may present due to COVID. Although it appears the economy is approving, the town's tax revenues may remain weak while pressures to maintain or increase services are always present. As such, while we move through the articles, I urge you to take into consideration the votes by each board or committee. These votes are reflective of countless hours of work digging into each article and each issue, and I urge you to ask questions to fully understand the information needed to decide your vote. Thank you. So now I just, just go ahead and start.
Yes.
Article Four, the Fiscal Year 2022 Operating Budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds in the treasury, or borrow a sum of money to be expended to defray town charges for fiscal year 2022, or take any other action relative thereto. Description: This article is the town's operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Move that the town appropriate the sum of $47,524,000, sorry, $355,000 to be appropriated, to be expended for the operating budgets for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, for personal services and for expenses as printed in a document entitled "Town of Kingston Fiscal Year 2022 Summary Budget." And to meet such appropriation, the sum of $46,773,804 be raised and appropriated; the sum of $374,121 be transferred from the water enterprise revenue; the sum of $298,154 be transferred from the waste water enterprise revenue; and the sum of $69,276 be transferred from the Septic Betterment Fund balance; and the sum of $9,000 be transferred from the Inspection Services Revolving Fund.
Say your name.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
State your name.
Hello. Thank you so much, Deb. I wanted to let people know that we are making a motion to amend Article Four Operating Budget. I make a motion to amend Article Four by increasing the general government appropriation by $35,721 for a new general government total of $3,377,418, and a new total for Article Four of $47,560,76 to fund the reorganization of the Selectmen's office. I will defer to the Town Administrator for more information.
Chair, a second?
Second.
Yes, please. If I don't, so you don't hurt your, behind the TV screen. It's okay. Not right there.
Here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You've got to speak into the microphone.
Okay, good morning.
State your name and your address.
There is a.
State your name.
I can't hear you. Susan Sherman, 215 Main Street. There's a saying in the Jewish community, "Next year in Jerusalem." I say "next year" at the school, but that's not what I'm here to speak about. I'm going to speak to the amendment that is about hiring the Assistant Town Administrator. It appears this amendment is to placate an employee by promotion into a position where the skill sets, background, and education are different than what this person holds. I would truly hope there would be other ways to recognize an employee of valued work. If we are talking about an executive structure needs, then I would hope the Board of Selectmen would investigate the needs, endorse, and conduct a professional search to find a qualified Assistant Town Administrator if there is a need. Thank you.
Now, can you just take a wipe and just wipe the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
Do I get paid for this now?
You did a great job, thank you.
Janitorial services. Now, what do I do?
If you can just go up the middle, ma'am.
Can I go this way?
Please, just right up to you. Sir?
I'm speaking in favor of the amendment. Is that okay? Bradford Randall, 10 Gray's Beach Road. I have a way we can save some money going into the next town meeting rather than have a search committee for a qualified Assistant Town Administrator. We can just hire the one that we have that's been doing the job that is qualified right now. And she's in the room. These items are difficult because they're line items, right? They're numbers. But behind this number is a person and a person who's been doing a damn good job in the town. One of the reasons that office runs so well and has, you know, our previous Town Administrator liked to say, things were going smoothly. And one of the reasons was, well, her name is Gloria, and she deserves this.
Sir, can you just wipe the microphone? Sorry. Yeah. Can you just take a wipe to the microphone, please? I was hoping we had someone here for that, but we don't. No. Thank you. Elaine?
Elaine Fiore, 60 Cold Street. I didn't plan on speaking to this article, but when the first speaker came up and said, "This is nothing more than to placate an employee," I took that as being offensive. There's a professional individual sitting here who has done a tremendous job, was qualified to be the acting TA for months while a search was going on, but isn't qualified to be an Assistant TA. Makes no sense to me. So please, let's not get personalities into these discussions today. I think this town has had enough division. Let's not use words against employees. She's a qualified, dedicated individual. Whether you agree with it or not, that's your vote, but don't make offensive remarks. Thank you.
Sir, do you want to be heard, or? Yes, could you just state your name and your address?
My name is Thomas Bouchard, and I live on Sixth Quail Run, and I'm also on the Planning Board in Kingston. I don't want to speak to the amount of money that we're talking about because I don't really understand what this position is worth or anything else, but I need to speak to the skill set. It gets awkward, I understand, because we're talking about somebody that's employed here, but the truth is, when we didn't have a Town Administrator, she ran that position flawlessly. We have an absence in our Planning Board, the leader, the Town Planner. She helped us through every aspect of the issues we had, and she acted like a true experienced Town Administrator. Thank you.
I would like to echo the comments of Mr. Bouchard and add to that. My name is Joseph Kazner from the Health Board. I would like to echo the comments of Mr. Bouchard and add to that that during the pandemic, the Health Board on many occasions interacted with the Town Administrator's office, which at that time was under the direction of Gloria Mitchell. We found her to be extremely cooperative and professional, and I would support this
All those in favor of allowing the amendments as read to the budget on Article Four, say "aye." All those opposed? Minimal opposition on that. Now, going back to the budget, I will open up, we had a second, I will open that up for debate if anyone would like to discuss the budget in Article Four. Now's the time. Seeing none? I move Article Four. We have, it's a majority vote. It's favorable by the Board of Selectmen, three to two, favorable by the Finance Committee, three to one, and this includes the added amendment from the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor of the budget, say "aye." All those opposed? Motion carries. With minimal opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, I made a mistake. We have started over. No. I skipped, I got so excited by the consent agenda, I skipped paying last year's bills. So we have Article Two I'd like to go back to. I apologize, I made a mistake.
Good morning. Mr. Moderator. Move the town appropriate $2,534.61 for the purpose of paying outstanding prior years' bills from the various town departments. And to meet this appropriation, the following sums be transferred as follows. Department Town Clerk, coding for tabulators, amount $2,145, free cash. Water Department, police details, $389.61. Funding sources, water enterprise fund retained earnings. Said expenditures to be under the direction of the respective departments, and further that the Town Accountant be authorized to allocate such funds.
Say your name. Debate? Board of Selectmen, favorable five zero, favorable Finance Committee, four zero. This is a four-fifth majority vote. All those in favor, say "aye." Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and I'm sorry. Six.
Six.
What is she doing?
She's going to advance.
Oh, no, can we do six first? Yeah, let's keep it in order.
She wants to increase 20 to nine because people are leaving and they lose control.
Okay. Six. Who's, Article Six?
Water Commissioners.
Article Five, right? We did five on the consent agenda.
We did five.
Sir, state your name. State your name.
Robert Karska, Water Commissioner, 55 South Street.
Sir, can you take him? I want it's over there, but you're muffled.
I can take it off. Sure. Robert Karska, 55 South Street Water Commissioner. Move that the town transfer a total of $100,000 from the FY '20 water surplus revenue and transfer $50,000 from the annual town meeting, 17 Article 12, to purchase land located on Map 97, Lot 11 and 12, totaling 17 acres for the purpose of developing a new well site and to authorize the Water Commissioners and/or Board of Selectmen to negotiate and enter into an agreement and take any other action related thereto. We have, for those of you that have been living in town for a long time, know that we have developed a number of wells in town, which is where your water comes from. We're running out of space to find well sites. We have identified a couple of well sites that were very promising, but for one reason or another, we couldn't develop them because they impacted surface water nearby. This is a perfect opportunity to buy a piece of land very cheaply because it's landlocked that is close enough to the Tracopon Well and the Tracopon Treatment Plant so that we could build our next, likely our last water well there, pump the water to the treatment plant, and have the water resources available that we've always provided for you. This is really a simple thing. We've had an estimate for the value of the land, and the estimate was around $100,000. We're asking for up to $150,000 in the event that we run into a negotiation problem. Should this become a problem, we will probably move in the direction of eminent domain. This is a piece of land that is not of any use at all to the current owners, and it would be extremely valuable. We've already had pump tests there. This is the best deal the town's going to get in a very long time. Typically, to buy the amount of land that it takes to build the well is well over $1 million. So this is a perfect opportunity at the perfect time.
We had a second on that. Anyone want to be heard in debate? Seeing none. This is a two-thirds vote. It's favorable Board of Selectmen, five zero, favorable by the Finance Committee, four to zero. All those in favor of the article, say "aye." All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for wiping the microphone. Takes us to nine. Article Nine's next. Anyone want to be heard in debate? Seeing none. This is a two-thirds vote. It's favorable Board of Selectmen five zero, favorable by the Finance Committee four to zero. All those in favor of the article, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for wiping the microphone. Takes us to nine. Who's presenting Article nine? Capital Equipment, there he is. Just state your name and your address. You just read them and I'll take care of the rest.
Bradford Randall, Vice Chair, Capital Planning Committee. Move that the sum of $1,471,917 be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $1,185,117 be transferred from free cash and $286,800 from the Capital Stabilization Fund. Set expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named below. Would you like me to read each project? Project one, $45,000 for purchase and installation of generator for townhouse. Project two, $130,000 to purchase two Ford SUV patrol cars for the police department. Project three, $286,200 to replace HVAC equipment at the library. Project four, $64,000 to purchase a trash trailer. Project five, $26,000 to purchase a walk-in freezer with awning indoor for the council on aging. Project six, $51,500 to purchase a Ford F-350 for streets, trees, and parks. Project seven, $36,000 to purchase an asphalt hot box for street, trees, and parks. Project eight, $10,728 to purchase the air compressor system at the highway garage. Project nine, $254,000 to purchase a ten-wheel dump truck with sander and plow for streets, trees, and parks. Project ten, $194,000 to purchase a six-wheel dump truck with sander and plow for streets, trees, and parks. Project eleven, $50,000 to replace bell system and clocks at KIS. Project twelve, $10,000 for renovation of LSC reflection room at KIS. Project thirteen, $12,789 for replacement of gym curtain divider at KES. Project fourteen, $12,900 for repairs to parking lot and sidewalks at KES, KIS. Project fifteen, $25,700 to pay for the third and final year of a lease that purchased a command vehicle for the fire department. Project sixteen, $36,100 to pay for the third full year of a five-year lease that purchased a Volvo front-end loader. Project seventeen, $19,000 to pay for the third full year of a five-year lease that purchased a John Deere backhoe. And project eighteen, $206,000 to pay for the first full year of a lease that purchased a ladder truck.
Excuse me, if, can you just take a quick look at one through eighteen as the numbers presented in the article, if those are all correct? You misread a couple of numbers. So just take a look, make sure the numbers in there are all correct. They're all correct. So if you made a mistake, it's as printed in the article, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Point of clarification. You read $130,000 to purchase two Fords. It's $130,000.
Yeah, that's why I just went as printed in the article.
I just need to make sure the motion itself to be corrected. And number eight, you mentioned $10,078 to purchase, and it's to replace. Just so the record is correct on the warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open this up for debate. Do I have a second? Open for debate? Seeing no debate. We'll take it to a vote. This is, as you can see in the article, it's generally, most of it was Board of Selectmen four to one, and Finance Committee three to one throughout the majority, I think everywhere. And the capital planning was five zero on one through eighteen. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? Hearing one or two in opposition, I'd say the motion carries unanimously with minimal Article ten? I think we did ten. Nope, ten.
Move that the sum of $67,830 be appropriated for the following equipment expenditures.
Microphone, please. Dick, can you get closer to the microphone?
Oh, sure.
State your name.
Sure.
I just asked him, ma'am, I just asked him to state his name. Can you state your name when you come to the microphone, please?
Can I state my name? Sure.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Let's try this again.
No.
Let's try this again.
Dick, you have to say your name. State your name.
Dick Aruda.
Thank you.
Move that the sum of $67,830 be appropriated for the following equipment expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $46,483.94 be transferred from free cash and $21,346.06 be transferred from the following special articles to be used under the supervision of the departments or organizations and for the purposes and in the amount as follows. Account number 01122-72558. AZ8 ATM 518, Davis Property Appraisal, $2,000. Account number 01122-78137, AZ16 ATM 415, Police Station Design, $10,000. Account number 01195-78158, A4 ATM 517, Facilities Repair, Police Highway, $3,737. Account number 01195-78164, A31 ATM 72317, Council on Aging, Insulation, $5,609.06. Total special articles to be transferred, $21,346.06. Project one, Department Street Trees and Parks, Repair of Highway, Department Doors, amount $8,130. Project number two, Fire Department, Replace Cabinets and Countertops, Smith Lane, $9,700. Project number three, Treasurer, Automated Payroll Implementation, $20,000. Project number four, Selectmen, Seaport Economic Council, MEA Resilience Plan, Municipal Contribution, $5,000. And Article number five, Selectmen, Kingston portion of the Plymouth County Grant Writers' Program, $25,000.
Seeing no debate. This was favorable by the Board of Selectmen five zero, favorable by the Finance Committee four to zero. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article ten, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dick. Article eleven.
Move to pass over Article eleven. We have recently learned some new information, and after conferring with council, we would like to pass over this article at this time.
Any debate? All those in favor, say aye. Hold on. Come to the microphone, ma'am, I can't hear you. Could you just state your name and your address?
Dot McFarland, Seventeen Wapping Road. I didn't get a chance to stand up before you called the vote. I don't think that most people realize how hard it is to work on these committees, how much work is involved in learning and background and study and reading, and the least we can do is a small compensation with health insurance. I don't think this should be eliminated.
Over the article, that means not moving it. So we're not moving forward with this article at this time.
I cannot understand you, I'm sorry.
The town is...
I have to say, the sound is so bad that I understand about every third word. I'm really sorry. But I still stand by what I said.
Anyone else want to be heard? All those in favor of passing over Article eleven, say aye. Motion's not being heard.
Mary McKinnon. Move that the salaries for elected officials be set as of July 1st, 2021, as printed in the warrant, and further, the sum of $4,461 be raised and appropriated for said salaries, and that the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with, motion carries unanimously with minimal debate, minimal opposition, Scott, sorry.
I'm going to do thirteen first.
Article thirteen, Wage and Personnel? Do I do twelve? No, so the Article thirteen was originally listed on a consent agenda, but it's going to be removed from that by my motion, and will be heard in the normal course.
All set?
All set. Just state your name, please.
Lorraine Bergio, Chairman of the Wage and Personnel Board, 42 Winthrop Street. For those of you who may be new to Kingston Town Meeting or may be unclear as to what the role of wage and personnel is, we have a one-sentence purpose established in 1966 which has not changed. And that is, the Board shall draw up and recommend to the town proposal for classification and compensation plans for consideration as a town bylaw, and shall from time to time recommend to the town any action deemed necessary to maintain a fair and equitable pay level. There are fifty-four positions covered by the Wage and Personnel bylaw, and they include department heads, directors, as well as many other positions. In essence, we're responsible for recommending compensation for all employees not otherwise covered by a union contract, personal contract, or our elected officials. This year's warrant article requests funding for two fiscal years, fiscal twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two. Generally, we only look at one fiscal year at a time, but last year, as you all know, it was very unusual. The Board has submitted textual changes to the Wage and Personnel Board, one of them being a new disciplinary policy which we did not have in the bylaw before. And in developing the policy, the Board, in conjunction with Human Resources, reached out to other municipalities examining their policies. Following review by Town Council, we're recommending adding the disciplinary policy you'll find in your handout. The Board believes adoption of this policy is in the best interests of the town and the employees by establishing a set of clearly defined regulations and expectations. We are also recommending an amendment to the existing probationary period section in the bylaw. Again, following the same researching methodology, and again, I'm sorry, in addition to that, we consulted with Kingston's department heads for their input into the matter. In fiscal twenty-one, wage and personnel employees, as with other contracted employees, receive no COLA or step increase. This freeze was approved at last year's spring annual town meeting, eh, well, I'm sorry, August. And the language found currently in the Wage and Personnel bylaw, Section 7D, step rates reflects this vote. At the December 2020 special time meeting, the body approved change to minimum wages effective 1/1/21. So for fiscal twenty-one, we're recommending a retroact of 2% COLA, which mirrors the agreements of the Patrolmen's KT EU Labor and KT EU Clerical Contracts. Again, as with the reunion, we are not recommending a reinstatement of the step rate increases for fiscal twenty-one. So when you look at fiscal twenty-one, you're seeing reflected a 2% increase. The fiscal twenty-one amendment also reflects some market adjustments for employees that were hired during fiscal twenty-one that were not, whose positions were not budgeted appropriately. For fiscal twenty-two, it gets a little bit complicated. Of the fifty, of the fifty-four positions under wage and personnel, we're funding or budgeting for forty-nine. Now, please bear in mind, we had to assume that fiscal twenty-one, 2% would be approved in order to build onto that schedule. So we rolled in the cost for the fiscal twenty-one increase. Again, as with the unions, we're recommending a 2%. We are not recommending freezing any step increases. In addition, administration has asked us to move awarding step rates from January 1 to July 1 for those employees that received their step award on January 1. What you have to understand is when you move somebody's step award date, you're talking six months of step rates. So that's an unusual expense if that is approved. We reclassified two department heads and are seeking approval for these actions. We are also recommending hiring a public health nurse, and I think if we think about it, in this COVID environment, a public health nurse is warranted. We also, with the cooperation of the Recreation Director Susan Woodworth, we redesigned Schedule Three to create a more consistent spread, rate by experience required to perform the job. I'd like to address the issue of COLA at this time. The question has been raised as to whether COLAs were intended to be excluded in connection with wage and personnel after the adoption of the classification plan in May of 2018. I've researched the subject through annual town minutes, annual town meeting videos, wage and personnel minutes, FinCom minutes, and the background on classification and compensation study distributed at the May 2018 meeting. The last sentence of which reads, "The proposed compensation plan includes the aging of the survey data by 2% so as to account for likely market adjustments over the past year and ensures the competitiveness of the plan to the external market." Therefore, in the compensation study handout itself, it includes a 2% COLA. So the question of the COLA was raised in 2018, and a suggestion was made that an amendment be submitted for the bylaw to cease awarding COLAs. The individual making the suggestion did not make a motion to amend, nor did anyone else on the floor. The 2018 Article 10 carried, and the compensation plan was put into effect. Since 2018, no requests have been submitted to the Wage and Personnel Board to address the COLA or schedule spread issues. In fact, this year, with the cooperation of the current Recreation Director, as I stated earlier, we revisited Schedule C Three. Section 8E of the bylaw prohibits changes to the bylaws without wage and personnel hearing the issue. That is why it would have to come through the Board. So in closing, I'd like to submit for your consideration the following average costs in relation to wage and personnel, the Patrolmen, KT EU Labor, and Clerical Contracts. The total budget... The total budgeted positions for patrolmen this year are 17. The amount requested is $103,561, which makes the average cost per position $6,992. Wage and personnel, budgeting at 49 positions, $181,778, which makes the average cost per position $3,010. KTEU labor and clerical were unable to be separated out, so we looked at that as a group of 68. The budgeted amount requested is $170, yeah, $170,665, for an average cost per position of $2,510. So KTEU, $2,510. Wage and personnel, $3,010. Patrolmen, $6,092. I ask the body to remember this information when considering their vote, and to not approve these numbers while at the same time approving the contracts would reflect the lack of commitment, value that we would be showing these employees. And the bottom line is, they deserve to be treated fairly inequitably, just like every other group of employees. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Is there amendment?
We need to reduce the amount by $10,000 because of the Gloria was in there, and now she's not. So if you can make an amendment to reduce the amount to be raised from 236 171 to 226.
Okay, hold on a sec. Let me, okay, I've just received a request to make an amendment to the bottom line number. With the removal of Gloria from the Town Wage and Personnel structure, we would be reducing the amount of funding to $2,226,200, God, Stana, $226,171, which would make the other numbers that I cited a little bit different. Okay.
Lauren, can you read that number just one more time, please?
$2,226. I apologize. I don't know why I'm flipping this. $226,171.
Do I have a second on the amendment? So this is to reduce the budget from 236 171 to 226 171. Would anyone like to be heard? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's only step one.
The lawyer is thanking you as well.
No, Lorraine, we're not done yet. That's just for the motion. That's just the amendment. We're gonna do the motion now.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm just happy with the amendment.
Okay.
I am happy with the amendment.
I'll now open Article 13 for debate. If anyone wants to be heard, please come forward. Seeing no one moving, I will indicate that it was favorable by the Board of Selectmen 4 to 1. Finance Committee vote is... Finance Committee, what was your vote on this?
2 to 2.
And Wage and Personnel, 2-0. This is a majority vote. Hold on, I don't know if she's coming forward.
Next, let's see, does she...
Okay, looking for a seat. All those in favor of Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with minimal opposition.
Thank you very much.
Turning back to the consent agenda, number 2, any handouts? Again, to expedite the meeting, I'm moving Articles 14, 15, and 16 as one motion. And Article 14 is the FY '22 Police Patrolman Collective Bargaining Agreement. Article 15 is FY '21 and FY '22 Kingston Town Employee Labor Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. And Article 16 is FY '21, FY '22 Kingston Town Employee Clerical Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. I'm gonna move that these pass or are voted on in one motion. I'm gonna read them again. If you'd like to debate any of them, just yell a "hold" and I'll remove it. Starting with Article 14, the Police Patrolman Collective Bargaining. 15, the Kingston Town Employee Labor Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. 16, FY '21 and '22 Kingston Town Employee Clerical Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. Seeing, hearing no holds. Do I have a second on this? All those in favor of passage of Articles 14, 15, and 16, which was favorable by the Board of Selectmen 5-0 across the board, favorable by the Finance Committee 4-0 across the board? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article number 17 is not being moved as, I don't know who can address that. Anyone No, no one wants to address it, so go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion, Sheila Vaughn, 7 Frank Street, I'm gonna make a motion to pass this over. It came to our attention that how... Sorry?
Yep.
Okay, motion to pass over.
So this motion's not gonna be heard. All those in favor are not hearing this, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion's passed over.
Okay, nobody wants to move?
No reason.
Why would you pass no one? It's not me.
I know, but they jump up and down.
You get nervous.
17, 18, 19, 20. We're on to 21? Article 21, Sampson Fund Appropriations.
Carl Pike, Shore Drive, Kingston Treasurer. Move that the sum of $32,000 be appropriated for Sampson Fund expenditures in fiscal year 2022, and to meet the appropriation, the sum of $3,887.39 be appropriated from the Elizabeth B. Sampson Memorial Fund, and $28,112.61 be appropriated from the unexpended balances of the following prior year appropriations from the Sampson Fund. Article 11 of 2019 Annual Town Meeting, $3,224.27. Article 14 of 2020 Annual Town Meeting, $24,888.34. Total reallocated, $28,112.61. And further, that the expenditures be under the supervision of the departments or organizations and for the purposes, and in the amounts as follows. Kingston Selectmen, September 11th Memorial, $10,000. Kingston Police Department, National Night Out, $8,000. Kingston Recreation Commission, Gray's Community Entertainment, $5,000. Kingston Recreation Commission, Community Mural Project, $2,000. Kingston Memorial Day Committee, Memorial Day Parade, $4,000. Kingston Fire Department, Christmas Luminary's, $3,000. Total recommended amount, $32,000.
Do you want to... I'll open it up to debate. Do you want to speak, say anything first?
Okay, Elaine Fiori, 60 Cold Street. I just have a question on the September 11th memorial, and the reason I'm asking, because in FY 2020, the Jones River Village Historical Society provided extensive documentation on a Sampson Fund request for a $5,000 Bradford House video. They stated what the outline of the video was going to be, who the narrators were, and what companies they would be working with. I've looked, and I can't find any backup documentation on this, so I'm gonna ask the same questions. What's the cost breakdown of the project? What actually is the project? Who are the narrators? What company vendors are involved? In other words, what's the $10,000 for?
I will defer to the Board of Selectmen who is sponsoring this project.
Thank you for asking the question and for giving me the opportunity to actually talk about this in front of the town meeting body, because I'm really... Oops, sorry. Oh, sure. Jess Kramer, 10 Gray's Beach Road. Thank you for asking this question, so have the opportunity to address this with town meeting body. It is the 20th anniversary of the events of September 11th coming up, and in memory of what happened, I've been working with the library and with Mike Lanatra from KPD, who was a first responder in New York on September 11th, to do a project that's twofold. The first part of the project is an oral history. The library has secured two story banks, which are storytelling machines that will be placed around town in various locations, so that people can speak their recollection of that, of those events of the day of September 11th, and tell their story into these machines with prompted questions, so an oral history can be recorded. There will also be oral history interviewers that are going to be trained, and part of the money will go towards that training, to have stories kind of drawn out from people who may have been more deeply affected. Those stories will then be curated and compiled into, to, I guess, compiled story that will remain in the town's archives and also be presented at various venues throughout town. In conjunction with that, we're also looking into a permanent memorial, and there will be additional fundraising that we're going to do privately needed to finish that project. We've been talking to two different monument makers to get some quotes as far as scale and scope of that, and also to figure out what location in town makes the most sense. This $10,000 gives a jumping off point, so that we can get more community involvement and understand what the people of the community actually want to see and how they want those events remembered. And we are going to leverage that from there if we get that opportunity.
Do you know what the cost is? Anticipated cost of the project, you said $10,000, but then you want to raise money. So what are you budgeting?
It will be, we're getting different quotes, but it will be, so part of it is the cost to hire someone to curate the story bank, and also to have training for oral history interviewers. But the bulk is going to go into a permanent memorial, which will cost in excess of this, the total budget. This is just the beginning of that. There will be prior, private fundraising beyond that. And like all other Sampson Fund allocations, if it is not used, it goes back into the Sampson Fund. This is just an appropriation for when we have that down, and when the town can have involvement to talk more about the size and scope of what they're looking to do, and when we can get a better fundraising budget into place, because that's going to be the bulk of the project for the monument.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm just used to when there's a proposal for money, there's backup to it. What's the design of the memorial? Things like that. If it's $10,000 and the bulk of it's for a memorial, maybe this approach is to do the narrations and all of that, since you're utilizing library resources and things like that. And again, I just don't understand what the breakdown of $10,000 for. And I'm questioning it more so because I know how limited the funds are from the Sampson Fund. And to be able to just say, and we'll give it back if we're not used, there's no bids, there's no nothing identifying of the $10,000, $8,000s for a memorial. Where's that memorial going? What's, I mean, I just honestly, I don't want to go back and forth, but those are my talking points. I just don't understand if where the $10,000 is going. So if I may, could we break this out into different motions to vote on each article? That's it. Thank you.
Would you like to address any of that?
I don't know what specifically to address. I mean, so other parts, no, there, we are funding projects. For instance, the mural, I'm not trying to pick on anything or whatever, but there, there's not a firm breakdown in quotes and vendors used on that. I'm trying, I'm letting the town meeting body know that we fully accept that fundraising will be needed beyond the $10,000. This is a project we want to do for the town to remember the events of that day. This just gives us a jumping off point, so we can work with vendors to be able to get plans to bring before the town, so they can decide the scope and scale that they want.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to, did I get a second on this? Can somebody give me a second? Thanks.
You got a second on the motion?
Good, I got a second, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold the September 11th Memorial Fund, and I'm gonna move the others, the $8,000 for National Night Out, Gray's Community Entertainment, $5,000, Community Mural Project, $2,000, Memorial Day Parade, and Christmas Luminary's, that's $4,000 and $3,000, for a total of $22,000. And then I will take up the September 11th Memorial Fund in a separate vote. So right now, I'm voting on everything but the September 11th Memorial Fund. And that is a majority vote, and it was favorable by the Board of Selectmen 5-0. Finance, 2...
4-0.
4-0, okay. So those all in favor of passing National Night Out, Gray's Beach, Community Mural, Memorial Day Parade, and Christmas Luminary's, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now I'll open up the September 11th Memorial Fund for debate.
One thing I wanted to clarify, too, is that Ms. Fiori brought up that there's limited funds within the Sampson Fund. Last year, because of COVID, many of the projects that were funded, such as Luminary's and Community Night Out, they weren't able to take place. So if anything, there is an extra that we wouldn't, because we didn't spend down last year's amount. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not putting us into a worse position.
Would anyone else like to be heard on the September 11th Memorial Fund for $10,000? This is a majority vote. It was favorable by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I think it's the ayes, but we'll count it. Where's the counters?
The balance?
We're gonna count it.
So is that on the balance?
No, just the September 11th.
Okay.
So all those in favor of the September 11th Memorial Fund for $10,000, take out your orange card, raise it proud. All those opposed, take out your orange card and raise it just as proudly. I have 53 in favor, 45 against. Motion carries. 22 is next. Article 22?
Have you moved the balance?
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
Can you just state your name and try to speak into the microphone?
Sure. Good morning. Joanne Cullen, 1 Sunset Road. I'm the vice chair of the Community Preservation Commission, and this article appropriates and reserves for the Community Preservation Fund 10% of each year's revenue for open space, historic preservation, and community housing, with the remaining revenue deposited into a fourth category, the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance. This article provides the administrative expenses of the committee, including but not limited to the Executive Secretary's stipend. I move that the town appropriate and reserve from the fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund annual revenue amounts, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for Open Space Reserve, Historical Resources Reserve, Community Housing Reserve, and Administrative Expenses as follows. Reserve: Open Space $36,507. Historic Preservation $36,507. Community Housing $36,507. Total $109,521. Appropriations: Administrative Expense $6,900. I'm sorry. The administrative expenses are broken down as follows. Personal Services $6,900. Expenses $11,353. A total of $18,253. And total reserve expenses totaling $127,774. And further, that the sum of $27,000 from Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance to the Community Preservation Reserves for Open Space.
Ma'am?
Well, we're going to move the administrative one first, so. She's, we're expecting amendment to this article. The article is going to be, going to be broken into four motions, one for administrative, and then we'll carry motions for each individual project. There is an amendment on the floor, but we're going to, we're going to move this administrative one first.
We're going to take the amendment.
We're going to move the administrative one first, and then we'll hear the amendment.
No, we're going to take, we have an amendment, and I'm going to take it.
I thought we were going to move this one first.
No one spoke to me about that.
Okay.
Broach, the microphone.
Thank, thank you, everybody.
Can you state your name?
Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street, Kingston.
Came to me this morning. You have an amendment that you'd like to read, correct?
I have an amendment to the CPC article by inserting the following. And further, based on the pending application to the CPC for the Blackwater Memorial Forest and the working appraisal report commissioned by the CPC, be it resolved that the town of Kingston, officials and staff, will work together to do everything in their abilities to secure this conservation land purchase on behalf of the town, for which a PNS has been submitted to the Board of Selectmen for the sale of approximately 46 acres of water and woodlands off Winthrop Street. That work will be performed to meet the deadlines set out in Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 61A, Section 14, as just this week was reinstated by Governor Baker's announced suspension of the emergency order that had delayed the timeframes normally followed to execute such land transactions, and to bring the matter to a vote at another town meeting within the necessary time period, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And as I stated, this is just a resolution. It has no bearing on what's here today. I said you could read it, we're not going to debate it. I said I'd take a vote on it. That's our understanding, correct?
Correct. I believe there's a second somewhere.
No. Is there a second? All those in favor of the, as motion to amend as read, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Returning to Article 22. I have a copy. Yep. All set. Thank you. Can you just wipe the microphone for me? Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Wipe the microphone. I wiped the mic. Sorry.
Back to Article 22. Do I have a, did I get a second? I'll open it up for debate. Seeing none. This was favorable Board of Selectmen, 5-0, favorable by the Finance Committee, 4-0. It is a majority vote. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. We're on to, the whole motion, we're done. I ran the whole motion. We're all set. No, we ran it as one. Did you, hold on. I, I moved the motion as the total of $109,521.
You only did the reserve. You moved this?
Yes.
Yeah, so then you have to do.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead. Read that in. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Move that the sum of $58,743 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds, restoration of the Rose Field at the Opchinsky Athletic Complex. Said project to be under the supervision of the Recreation Commission, and all expenses subject to review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
What was it again?
The amount was $58,743.
Do you want to do them separately?
If there's no opposition, you can.
Yep, keep going.
Okay. Move that the sum of $45,380 be appropriated from the Available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds for the installation of sand volleyball court at Grace Beach Park. Said project said to be under the supervision of the Recreation Commission, and all expenses subject to review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
Next one?
Second.
Thank you.
Move that the sum of $45,000 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds for engineering construction plans for an accessible walkway around baseball and softball fields at Opchinsky Athletic Complex. Said project to be under supervision of the Recreation Commission, and all expenses subject to the review and approval of the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
Second.
Lastly, move the sum of $56,351 be appropriated from available Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds for the Reed Committee, Community Tennis Court Partial Fence Replacement. Said project to be under the supervision of Recreation Commission, and all expenses subject to review and approval by the Community Preservation Committee prior to submittal for payment.
Second that.
Would you like to be heard?
Yeah, me. Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive, Chair of the Recreation Commission. I would just like to amend on the, the first one for the Opchinsky Rose Field Restoration. The amount, instead of $58,743, to go back to the original number of $42,735. If you're reading the booklet, we started out at the $42,000 to rebuild the field. There was an organic part put in to do like a three-year organic plan. I would like to have just that part be removed, so I'd just like to go back to the original If anybody wants anything else, I can answer.
Is that in writing? So can you just tell us why you're opposing?
So I, I know.
Hold on, do I have a second on the motion? Thank you. Go ahead.
What was that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So if you look at the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, most of them were unfavorable. Part of the reason in discussions with some folks was because of the organic part that we were going to do. It was going to be like a three-year trial, but part of the issue with that is we, number one, don't know how it will take. It will take away like, things like grub control, and if you've ever been in a field where grubs take over, it would cost a gajillion dollars to replace all those fields. So I would just like to take the organic part out. If we ended up doing this throughout the whole complex, it would cost a small fortune for our children to play sports there. So everything we're doing down there, the fields are in really good shape. We have a really good grass guy who's been down there for quite a while now. If you haven't been back there, the fields and the grass is spectacular, and I don't want to ruin that.
Okay. Would you like to respond? Would you like to say anything?
Oh, no. I'm fine. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, if, let them vote on the amendment, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't have a, I don't have a position.
Marilyn, I'm still talking.
Can you just wipe the microphone? Can you just wipe the mic? Come.
I wiped it.
Hold on. State your name.
Pine Dubois, again, 93 Elm Street. I don't want to step on Marilyn, because I know she's got a lot to say about this, but organic doesn't mean doing nothing. Organic is a safer, more kid-friendly method of addressing growth, pests, and all kinds of environmental issues. Safer for the environment. Opchinsky Fields are very close to Blackwater Pond, Blackwater Swamp. I think it would do the town so much good to begin to adopt methods that are safer for the environment and for the people who live here as well. I think the investment, you know, might be, might be difficult at first. It's going to require actual lawn there, instead of dumping all kinds of fertilizers on it, but none of that stuff is good for the kids. We've learned some hard lessons the older you get, and I would strongly recommend keeping it the way the Vice Chair of the CPC has recommended.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Marilyn Kozadoi, 160 Pembroke Street, a former member of the CPC of 10 years and a Conservation Commissioner for 19. I'm the one guilty for suggesting that we investigate the use of organic turf management in town, based on research done, making a connection between youth cancer onset and the use of pesticides, herbicides, and fungicides. I would also state that Connecticut passed legislation outlawing the use of these methods on playing fields and playgrounds utilized by youth preschool through grade eight, and I believe they're currently investigating extending that to high school age youth. I did not, interestingly enough, come at this from an environmental perspective. I came at it from a public health perspective, and asking for the $15,000 as a pilot study, I felt, was more than a good use of the funds. It was not making a commitment in perpetuity of an organic management. It was investigating the youth, and again, from a public health, youth health perspective. So I stand by my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just wipe the microphone for me, ma'am? Sir, do you have new information? Do you want to respond?
Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive. Once again, just one thing on the organic component, because it is more expensive. So if we are going to go that route, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but if it, our budget right now is about $146,000 to take care of all the fields. Part of that money comes from the budget, part of that money comes from the cell tower, and the other part comes from the user fees that we charge the Kingston Youth Sports Organization. And that would probably at least double to about 300 grand. So unless town meeting is willing to step up and give us another $150,000 in a recreation budget in the future to take care of an organic plan down at the fields, if they want to do that, sure, but I just think that's a pretty hard sell, because I don't think we should put it on the backs of the kids that want to play soccer and baseball and football and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you wipe the mic?
Marilyn Kozadoi, 160 Pembroke Street. I did not mention that the UMass at Lowell has a Toxic Use Reduction Institute, wherein they provide information and grants and other available sources for advice, and I do believe there is enough information out there. Again, we are not making a commitment to spend all kinds of money. I would also add that they do case studies indicating that although the upfront cost might be more than we are used to spending, over time, this dissipates. And again, we're talking about a health issue for our youth. There is advice, help, and grant money out there, and I think this is an opportunity for the town to investigate this approach. It is not making an enormous financial commitment. Thank you.
35 Lake Street. I am a nurse. I am a member of your Board of Health as an elected position. I would like to further investigate this, as we know that chemicals can danger our children, and our children are our future. The money we spend now could help them grow and develop into better people, and hopefully avoid some cancers and other things that are caused from these harmful chemicals. If there are grants available and ways to investigate it further without a huge expense to the town, I think it is well worth it.
Seeing no further debate, this is to vote on the amendment, and that is to reduce the, the field in the sum of $48,743 to $42,735. So a yea vote will make the amendment to $42,735, and no vote will keep it as printed in the article. So all those in favor of changing the number, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Count it. No, we're going to count.
So let me ask you a question. What are the three numbers now? What happened?
Forty-two of fifty-eight.
The first one, Grace Beach.
Hasn't changed.
How much do you see it as?
Grace Beach.
So all those, do you need a second? Hold on, hold on. Right here, right here, right.
Okay, well, I want to let them know what I'm talking about.
Okay. Speak with me.
All right. I would like to know what each one of these numbers is.
We're not there yet. We're just doing the amendment.
It's just on the motion to amend.
I know, but I can't, I, I'm sure I'm confused. Let me, if I could.
No, you, you can hold on a second.
Are you kidding me?
You can speak with me.
Sean, do me a favor and tell me what the number is on the Grace Beach, what the number is in Opchinsky, and what the number is on Reed, and then tell me what the amendment is, because everybody's confused.
Okay, I'm getting to that. The amendment, the amendment is to Opchinsky's field, the forty, $58,743. There was a motion to amend that number to $42,735. The other remaining project numbers have not been changed. So we're moving now, we're counting. All those in favor of amending the Opchinsky Field from $58,743 to $42,735, as the motion indicated, we're going to count. All those in favor of the amendment, take out your red cards and say aye. Well, you don't have to say aye. Please raise your hand.
I've seventeen.
Twenty. Twenty. All those opposed, take out your cards and raise your hand. Seventeen.
Twenty, seventeen, twenty.
Sorry.
It's okay, but I have the right to ask questions and make amendments.
I just like.
All right.
I know.
We do have that right, and we've already gone through. We need to go back to the original motion, because we never even read all of the numbers.
The original motion, you did the original.
We do have that right. And we've already gone through. We need to go back to the original motion because we never even read all of the numbers.
The original motion just did the research.
Original motion for appropriation for expenses. The count didn't see that.
Yes.
Thirty-seven.
What was it, 32?
Very true, 37. Motion fails. So now we're back to the main motion for the one, two, three, four projects. Which were...
I'd also like to say that the Rec Commission is here. Susan is here. If anyone has any questions on any particular projects or if anybody has any questions on any particular projects, we can answer them.
So moving all those projects together as print up.
Thank you. Lorraine Bergio, 42 Winthrop Street. I have a question on the volleyball court. I'd like to know what the anticipated annual maintenance costs for that would be. I assume the park and rec will be scheduling it. And I don't see in the motion or in the article anything about fencing. And it may sound a little strange, but if you put a volleyball court filled with sand with no fencing, you're going to be cleaning up a lot of stray stuff. So who's going to have to do that? But the most important part is how much is it going to cost the town to maintain a sand volleyball court?
Hello, Susan Woodworth, 136 Grove Street, and also the Director of Parks and Recreation. Just wanted to say with regard to annual maintenance, we will utilize costs from user fees as we do programming. We'll be doing some volleyball programming, both adult and children programming. So some of those user fees will be used to continue the maintenance. The volleyball court itself is mostly sand and just the particular structures. There will be a guardrail that will be installed to help alleviate the concern of the volleyball going into the parking lot in those areas. That's part of the project as well. The expense as far as the maintenance, the sand cost and replacement, that would be coming out of the revolving funds for the Recreation Department for user fees, and the same thing with any equipment repair.
Fencing to prevent animals from getting into the sand, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can you wipe the microphone? State your name.
Michael Martin, 18 Prospect Court. I just can't in good conscience. I would actually move to sever the volleyball court on a separate vote. $46,000 for a volleyball court when you can go down to any of the five and 10 dime stores and buy a portable net for $20 when you want to play there. We're coming out of a tight expenditure. That's an awful lot of money for something that is such a niche use and could be accommodated by $20 for any family that wants to go to the beach and use such an apparatus.
I will do them one by one. If you want to hold one, call it hold after I read out the article. $58,000, well, any other debate? $58,743 for the Opochinski Rosefield Restoration. Does anyone want to hold that? $45,380 for Gray's Beach Park Sand Volleyball Court Installation. Do I have a hold? $45,000 for the Opochinski Athletic Complex Engineering Services for Walkways. And $56,351 for the Reed Community Tennis Court Partial Fence Replacement. Having one hold, I will remove the volleyball court. So we will vote on the Opochinski Field for $58,743. The Opochinski Athletic Complex Engineering Services for Walkways for $45,000. And the Reed Community Tennis Court Partial Fence Replacement for $56,351. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with minimal opposition. We'll now go back to the tennis courts. I mean, the sand, Gray's Beach Sand Volleyball Court. Would anyone like to speak further in that? Good morning, sir.
Peter Baird, 109 Summer Street. The idea that one can pick up equipment to play volleyball for $20 is incorrect. That might work for badminton. But volleyball, as probably many of you know, is actually an Olympic sport. To have a net sturdy enough to handle strong serves and things and not get destroyed instantly has some cost. I haven't been involved in this particular article. I have in it, at various times in my life, enjoyed volleyball. And there are a number of groups in town that play it mainly inside facilities. And it's sometimes been hard to get those facilities. So I would support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Good morning.
Can you state?
Megan Higgy, 42 Winthrop Street. My question would be why the FinCom voted 2-2 against the volleyball courts and why somebody on the CPC committee voted unfavorable as well.
Does someone from FinCom have a response?
Mary McKinnon, Finance Committee. I was one of the members who voted against this. As we've seen, we have difficulty oftentimes in maintaining some of our facilities. So adding a new feature, there were concerns about whether we would be able to continue to maintain our existing facilities before adding any new ones. There was also a concern about that ball, where the placement of the volleyball field or court, sorry, is going to be positioned as between the tennis courts and the basketball courts. And without fencing, as Lorraine had mentioned, or 20-foot netting, those balls are going to be bouncing all over the place. So I feel that we would be coming back here looking for improvements. The Gray's Beach facility is very limited in space, as we all know. Parking would be a challenge. So there were a number of concerns regarding implementing a new feature at that particular facility, as well as the impact for any ongoing maintenance.
I actually agree with all of that. I don't think this is the time or the place for this big of a project. My other concern is what Lorraine brought up, is the maintenance. Is someone going to clean that every single day? I mean, we'll state the obvious, someone's going to poop in it. Someone's going to throw trash in it. There's going to be unavoidable situations with balls flying all over the place. So I would... Do we have any answer as to why somebody on the CPC voted unfavorable to this as well since it was an application put in front of them?
It was Anthea. I don't know if she's here. And I don't want to speak for her. I think it was more about use. She didn't feel like it was going to be widely used in the town. It would just really fit like a sort of a niche group of people.
I agree with that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Tyler Bouchard, 6 Quell Run. I just want to say in favor of this, as somebody who grew up in the town, playing recreational sports, using basketball courts, using the Reed, using all these facilities, these were always places of gathering, places for friends, and a place to have physical exercise. I think the timing and where we are in our society, we need to encourage children to get outside. We need to encourage adult programs. We need to encourage the use of space that we have. We don't have a place to play volleyball. We don't have a place to do these activities. As somebody who's played sand volleyball my entire life, I look at it as a great opportunity to get children involved in sports and activities. And I speak to this as somebody who would like to see my own children in the future use these facilities to stay healthy, stay active, and use these facilities properly. Thank you.
Can you just wipe the microphone, sir?
Bradford v. Norman, 38 Summer Street. I'm also the Facilities Director for the town. The maintenance cost for a volleyball court is very low. So I'll let them know. If it was high, I would be complaining because I'm the one who's going to be maintaining it with the Recreation Department. Second, if you go to the Gray's Beach on any given day and drive in and look on the tennis courts, you will see a phenomenon that is happening throughout the country called pickleball. I'm a tennis player. If you told me pickleball would be down at Gray's Beach for recreation and there'd be hundreds of people playing pickleball at Gray's Beach, I would tell you you were crazy. But that is happening. I believe if they put a volleyball court at Gray's Beach, you will see two things happen. Those people who are on the beach, the children will go up and have a place to play. They will play volleyball there just because it's there and probably have a lot of fun in the sand, too. Second, as Susan had stated, this is a program facility. It's not something for someone to walk in and just hit a few volleyballs. Susan will be programming that. And there will be money flowing through the system, through the revolving account, which will pay for all of the maintenance to it. As a facilities manager for the town, I would say that's a perfect thing to do for the town and a perfect location. Thank you.
Wipe the microphone. Thank you. Give me a second. Seeing no further debate, we can move the Gray's Beach Sand Volleyball Court Installation for $45,380. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Just a little housekeeping. I believe you read when you moved the motion, but someone didn't hear you. You, on Article 22, we voted on the $109,000. And I believe you read the $127,774 on the second page, total reserves and expenses. Okay. Just the accountant didn't hear it, so we're going to just vote it again. So can you just move that second portion of the motion a second time?
They kind of, it's one motion. The end of Page 41 and the top of Page 42 are the same motion. You want me to read the whole thing again? Okay. Move that the town appropriate and reserve from fiscal 2022 Community Preservation Fund annual revenue amounts. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for Open Space Reserve, Historical Resource Reserve, Community Housing Reserve, administrative expense as follows. Reserve: Open Space, $36,507. Historic Preservation, $36,507. Community Housing, $36,507. Total, $109,521. Further, appropriate administrative expenses: Personal Services, $6,900. Expenses, $11,353. Total, $18,253. Total reserve expenses, $127,774. And further, to transfer the sum of $27,000 from Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance to the Community Preservation Reserve for Open Space.
Can I have a second? So we're just going to revote this till the record's clear. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. No, we're at... Okay. Well, someone has to make a motion. You're going to make a motion for 32? Yeah, you have to.
Advance Article 32?
Is there a second?
Yes, I heard a second.
You said 32. What, could you say the number again, please?
Number 32?
Is there a second to advance Article 32? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion fails.
Okay.
So 24.
All right. Move that the town appropriate $117,000 for the purpose of funding the engineering design and construction oversight and any and all other incidental or relative costs of proposed improvements to the intersection of Route 3A Tremont Street with Route 3 Pilgrim Highway as further identified in the Old Colony Planning Council, NPO Transportation Improvement Plan as Mass dot project number 606002 to be expended under the...
I didn't see anyone move. I will, I will, if you'd like, I'll... We're going to finish this one, then we'll go back to it. We already have one going. We're going to finish the article that's before us now, and then I'll go back to it. Go ahead.
Okay. To be expended on the discretion of the Planning Director to secure professional engineering services and to meet said appropriation, to transfer from free cash further, to authorize the board of selectmen and/or its designees to apply for, accept, and expend any state and/or federal grants and/or loans or other public or private funds that may be available for the project and to execute any and all documents to take all other action necessary or convenient to undertake this project.
I'd open this up for debate. Would anyone like to be heard? Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, Carol Bulsey, 29 Wapping Road. What is the nature of the change that would be made to this intersection?
Can you address that, the change?
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on. No. Can anyone address the question as to the change? You can, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Valerie Mossard, resident of Kingston at 1 Schofield Road, and also the Duxbury Town Planner. Good morning. So we've been working the two towns, Duxbury and Kingston, for about five or six years since I started working in Duxbury to secure funding to install a sidewalk, crosswalks, a slight widening, and signalization of what we think of as Exit 10. There's a lot of accidents there. The fire departments from both towns, Kingston and Duxbury, spend a great deal of time responding to accidents there. So far, no one's been killed, but there've been dozens of injuries. We have, this is our final opportunity to secure funding in the Transportation Improvement Program, which would do all of those improvements for free. We just need to spend the engineering. The state has put $250,000 into the Transportation Improvement Bond Bill in January of this year. year, and then the two towns are proposing to split the rest of the engineering costs at $117,000 apiece. Duxbury Town Meeting last Saturday approved their half of the remainder of the funding for the improvements, and we're asking that the Town of Kingston approve this article so that we can secure that $1.8 million to get the work done and start the engineering design.
Yes.
And just to put this project into perspective, the total cost of the project is just about $2.8 million. The state, as Valerie mentioned, is funding everything but $134,000, $117,000 each from Kingston and Duxbury for just the engineering costs. The project will be done, I think, in 2025, Valerie?
Yes, they've said if we fund it, they'll bump it back up to 2025.
It's printed in the article as a two-thirds vote. This is actually a majority vote. It was Board of Selectmen favorable and Finance Committee favorable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Sheila, Sheila, could you go back to the other one? Due to a point of order being raised, I will open up the motion to advance Article 32.
32.
I believe the reason this was asked to be moved early, my name is Tom Bouchard, 6 Quail Run, is because adopting the flood planes is... The flood plane maps is very important to a lot of people that sit here today. As we see people start filing out, if we don't adopt these flood planes before July, anybody who has flood insurance could stand to lose it or will lose it. And so it's very important that we just simply adopt the flood plane maps, and I think that we need to have a discussion anytime something is moved. I think we have to have, at least it opened up for a discussion. And so I'd like to take that time because I think this is important to a lot of people who have flood insurance in our community.
Two-thirds vote, so we do need to have a majority of people here to actually approve that. So that's why we moved it up in case that people were to decide to leave.
Does someone else... Sir, do you want to be heard on the motion to advance? Okay. Seeing how he didn't have an opportunity to be heard, I will take a second vote, not reconsidering it, but I have to give... I didn't see somebody who wanted to debate something. So having that being said, I will take a vote. We had a motion to advance Article 32. I called it, and it was voted on. I didn't open it up to the floor for debate. I didn't see someone standing up. Somebody called a point of order, so I wanted that person to be heard as their right as a resident of Kingston. They addressed on why they wanted to advance Article 32. They think it's important. It should be discussed now for reasons as stated by the gentleman. So now I will take a new vote on whether or not we're going to advance Article 32 to be the next article heard before town meeting. All those in favor of advancing Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion to advance carries by majority vote. I will now take up Article 32.
Tom Bouchard, 6 Quail Run, Chairman of the Planning Board. As I just explained, oh, let me do the motion. I'm sorry, I messed up as well. Move that the town amend, the Town of Kingston amending zoning bylaws Section 3.2b and 6.2 as printed in the warrant. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for hearing that point of order by Tyler. As I explained, very important that we do this before July. If town meeting, someone calls for a count of people here and people dwindle out, we have a serious problem in our hands. Another local nearby town didn't like the zoning maps, which I don't either because I think they're pretty fraudulent, a lot of it, so they voted against it. Now anybody in their community can't argue about the maps because they haven't adopted them. So simply, if we adopt these and you have a problem with the flood plane maps because we adopted them, you now have the ability to go and see if it's adjusted for your property. A lot of people are going to sell their properties. They find out that mysteriously, all of a sudden, they're in the flood plane zone. There is a way to go and address that, but you can't address that if we don't adopt the flood planes as presented, and that's it.
Town Council, you kind of gave some legal reasons, and I just want to make sure that what you stated is correct, so...
Yep.
So I echo what Mr. Bouchard has said, and specifically, this is having to do with some updated guidance that was considered or issued statewide. Failure to adopt this bylaw change would likely result in people losing flood insurance, so whether or not there is an argument for or against the actual maps, maybe for a debate, but this is definitely a stopgap that I won't say what you should do, but that's the issue, insurance.
No, you did well.
I just wanted to... Do I have a second? Anyone else want to be heard? I see nobody moving. I'll take a vote. This is a two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
Yep. Two-thirds. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. FitCon revoted that. Do you know what their vote was? 25?
I'm a little taller than this thing. Move that the town approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant. You'll note that the warrant actually says Article 26 in the motion, but it's really 25, so just want to point that out. This article shifts the reporting structure for the health agent and the assistant assessor so the town administrator has the authority to oversee and provide more uniformity in day-to-day management. It is an area where we are looking to make some organizational change and streamlining to enable the town administrator to do an effective job when it comes to personnel matters. Essentially, if this article passes, the health and assessing departments will operate just like recreation, the library, the senior center, planning, zoning, conservation, and other staff-supported boards. What we are proposing would mean that if there are personnel issues, such as performance or problems between employees, the town administrator would have the ability to direct these department heads and provide guidance and oversight. The assistant assessor and health agent would work under the administrative direction of the town administrator and under the policy direction of their respective elected boards. The town administrator would have no authority to interfere with their ability to perform their statutory duties. This is not a new idea. In fact, there are many communities who have their health and assessing department heads reporting to their respective boards through their town administration, including Pembroke, Hull, Carver, East Bridgewater, and more. Our previous assistant assessor put it quite well, in her own words, after serving the town for eight years. Quote, "While the Board of Assessors will likely oppose this article, I think it's important to establish a bridge between the assessor's office and the town administrator for administrative purposes," unquote. She went on to say, quote, "While I am 100% understanding and supportive of the separation of power, the structure of these boards has changed. In most towns, boards are no longer working members of the department they represent. They are the signatory authorities bound by an oath of ethics and state laws of which they are the local authority on. The Board of Assessors is much like any of the other boards in town. This is not their full-time job. They are not in town hall for the day-to-day, and they do not fully understand what else may or may not be happening throughout town, which could affect how things are or need to be handled. The town administrator does. The boards are essentially volunteer positions to assist the running of the town," unquote. A former town employee in the health department stated, quote, "Bottom line is that everyone on these boards has a full-time job, and having somebody that can handle the day-to-day stuff seems reasonable to me. As long as the board has full say over policy, the new plan makes sense," unquote. She went on to add, quote, "Some people are so worried about losing power, they lose sight of the bigger picture. As much as people want to look at town hall as a small-town family atmosphere, it is not. It needs to be run like the business that it is, and the day-to-day issues need full-time commitment, not just a bi-weekly meeting," unquote. I understand that some have objected to the process, and that that can certainly be addressed and handled differently in the future. But objecting to the process and objecting to this article are two different things. In summary, approving this article, the health agent and the assistant assessor will have the same leadership, guidance, and support afforded to other department heads. It will also ensure that should disciplinary action be needed, the town administrator has the authority to make any necessary action promptly. In addition, this change will give these department heads the continuity of administrative guidance to weather whatever changes the political environment may bring as boards change through election cycles. As several members of our Board of Health stated in a recent meeting, "Health and politics don't mix," and I couldn't agree more. It's true with the assessors as well. Thank you.
I got a second. Open it up for debate. Hold on. You'll defer?
Good morning. My name is Joseph Kazna, and I'm currently the Chairperson, Chairman of your Board of Health. I come before you today representing not only a unanimous vote by all of your elected members of the Board of Health, but I am also aware that the Board of Assessors has also voted unanimously against this article. This article, if passed, would do exactly what the voters of Town of Kingston have traditionally not wanted for years and years. That means it would put all of the authority that we currently have over the health agent's position and decisions that are made under the authority of the town administrator, an individual who has only been here for a mere six months. This would be a huge change in the way the Town of Kingston operates. Some of the towns that were referenced as doing things this way, that was inaccurate. Pembroke does things very similar to the way that we do. I worked in the Town of Hanau on that Board of Health many years ago, and I can tell you that they do things exactly the same way as we do. Regardless of any other communities that might do things in a different way, mass law still governs this decision. Mass law says, and I'll take just a minute of your time, and I'm going to read it to you. It's only a couple of sentences. Boards of Health may appoint agents or directors of public health to act for them in cases of emergency or if they cannot conveniently assemble. Any such agent or director shall have all the authority with which the board appointing him had, but he shall, in each case within two days, report the action for its approval. That's what the law says. Now, I did ask town council if this action was legal, and they told... He assured me that they had worked on the language, and under this particular language, I guess it was. But it's been my experience in life that if you ask five lawyers the same question, you tend to get five different opinions. And accordingly, I'm just reading you what the law says. It was developed by the Commonwealth. It's right there. It's Chapter 11, Section 30. That's what it says. As far as the Board of Health, you know, there's all kinds of reasons that we discussed in the meeting. Let's see. Some of the high points that they wanted me to make to you, and I would like to make to you. This was not vetted between the potentially affected parties. But then again, in a conversation with Selectman Enberg last night, I'd had to agree that maybe that would have been a waste of time because, in her words, and I would quote her, "We would never have come to an agreement on this. We would never have agreed to this, and I don't see why anyone here would." You would be giving up your power at the polls. You elect us and assign us these responsibilities. What this article wants to do is to modify those responsibilities and take them away. It would meddle in the very operations that the Board of Health holds responsibility over it. We don't need this. We don't want an additional level of responsibility. I would urge you to please vote no on this article. Thank you very much.
Would you like to respond?
I just... I wanted to say again, the town administrator would have no authority to interfere with their ability to perform their statutory duties. That includes Chapter 111, Section 30. So I just wanted to point that out. And the other piece is Pembroke does, in fact, their assistant assessor and health agent report through the town manager, so...
By line of business, I secure permits for various projects that have to be approved by boards of health all throughout southeastern Massachusetts. And in most cases, those health agents standing across from me, who I know, several of them, work directly under the supervision of the Board of Health. That's the way it's structured in most of the towns in our county and in southeastern Massachusetts. I see no reason for this change. Thank you.
Good afternoon again. Michael Martin, 18 Prospect Court, the current Chair of the Board of Assessors. I find it interesting that we hear discussions of power and the diffusion of power. The seat that I currently hold is not my seat, it's your seat. You elected me, you elected Andy McGinnis, and you elected Scott DeSantis to represent your interests. We just learned about this a few weeks ago, and I find it terribly interesting that whenever we look at this and we see the recommendations of various boards, none of this came to our attention. I've been your board member now for two years, and the two years that I've represented the Board of Assessors, I've had no input from the Board of Selectmen, no questions from the Board of Selectmen, no recommendations from the Board of Selectmen. And what this is endeavoring to do, it is the Board of Selectmen who appoints the town administrator. It is the town administrator who, in theory, under these auspices, would then have control over an organization and the hiring and firing of the assessor under which works with us and with us. They indicated that we do have jobs. We do. I'm an attorney. I'm also an appraiser. Andy McGinnis on your board is a title examiner. Scott DeSantis, the newly-elected member, is also an assessor of the Town of Taunton and an appraiser. We meet almost every single week, it seems, to go over things to do with the town, so to suggest that we don't know what's going in our office is simply untrue. In addition to that, the former Chair, Andy McGinnis, could be seen at the town hall easily, conservatively, two to three times a week, popping in, and it'll be a practice that I'll maintain while I'm in there. This choice that we are making tonight, and let's be clear, it's the old first they came for this party and then they came for that party. They're not just stopping there. This is an unadulterated power grab. I'm not going to be on your board forever. This doesn't affect me. What this does is it takes the power away from you to determine how you want your town read. We're placeholders, and we're qualified, and we're invested, and we want to make sure that we have the ability to take care of things. I can report, at least preliminarily, to boards are often like turning a battleship around. They don't turn around quickly. They're not speedboats. But I would suggest that our battleship has turned around. We have a new assessor. We have a new assessor, she is fabulous, she's going to do great for this, and the new member on our board will work well with us. We want to continue to have the ability to do the job that you elected for us, and we'd like to continue it under the authority that you've been granted. This is your power, not theirs. Don't let them take it from you.
Mr. Martin, can you clean the mic?
Elaine Fiori, 60 Cold Street. As a previous member of the Board of Selectmen, we always worked very closely with the Board of Health and the Board of Select, and the Board of Assessors, especially during COVID. We were a close group, working together for the best interest of the town. Streamlining the operation is being, so from that perspective, I don't know what's changed. Streamlining the operation is being used as a reason for this change. The language in Section 1 says, "shall be governed by this act." The description states, "state legislation." This isn't streamlining the operation. This is changing the structure of town government, which is why the language says, "by this act," in special legislation. This is not a simple organizational change. This is taking authority away from two elected boards to give the authority to another elected board, the Board of Selectmen. Why would the Board of Selectmen be more knowledgeable than the members you elect to serve on those boards, whose only focus is the discipline they were voted to represent? These boards have sitting members who are professionals in the area they represent. What are the pros and cons of these changes? What are the obstacles today that are trying to be corrected? If streamlining the operation is the goal, then why choose the Health Agent and the Assessor, Assistant Assessor? Why not include the Treasurer, Collector, and Town Clerk positions? The Health Agent and the Assessor are professional positions with defined job descriptions and specific qualifications. Are we saying that these professionals aren't capable of working with management on a day-to-day basis? It happened in the past. This decision is more than this body speaking for two minutes each. This is bigger than, a bigger picture that needs more vetting. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee aren't unanimously on this vote as well. So there's too many open questions. It's, again, boards and committees have always worked together. I don't know what's changed. So please vote no on this article.
Hi, Lorraine Bergio, 42 Winthrop Street. On the face of it, yeah, it's about power. You would look at it, who does this, who does what? But from a personnel standpoint, now remember, I'm Chairman of Wage and Personnel, I have seen personally, because I used to work for a municipality, what happens when a town employee is supervised by an elected or appointed official? From the point of view of that employee, I want you to just think about that. You're an employee, you report to a board. A board is elected or appointed. If you have a problem with that person, you have no recourse, because the only people you can talk to are the people that appointed them. Okay? So if the Board of Health elected positions, okay, we can't, you can't, as an employee, complain to every single resident in the community because your boss is being, his, the behavior is inappropriate, the actions are inappropriate. So from, strictly from an employee point of view, in order to protect the employee and the town from litigation, you need to have them report to somebody who is accountable, responsible. And again, I am not inferring that the Board of Health and the Board of Assessors are not. It's just there needs to be a straightforward chain of command from the employee to the administrative authority. And an appointed board or an elected board are not going to do it, because you can't go and complain to everybody that your supervisor has violated policy or process. Right now, the statute does say the Health, the Board of Health appoints the Health Agent. Okay? We were not involved in that because it's a statutory right. Nobody's taken away their right to dictate policy, guidelines, or any of that nature. It's all about the employee protection. And this, by having them report to the Town Administrator, that affords them more protection than having them report to an elected board with no oversight other than what the residents think. And that's not right for any employee to not have the protection that the law allows everybody else. Thank you.
Wapping Road. Kingston is fortunate to have highly-qualified people on the Board of Health who have repeatedly shown their interest and concern for the health and safety of our community. A Board of Health is unlike other boards. Medical expertise is not common knowledge. Who on the Board of Selectmen can make better-informed health recommendations than these elected board members who have the education, experience, and expertise to advocate on our behalf? Why centralize power in the hands of a very few, creating a mayor's office, when we all benefit from the transparency, independence, and balance of power shared among our boards? The voters have spoken on this subject. Who are the Selectmen and Town Manager to override that? Thank you.
That's okay. I haven't had to give a speech in 18... William Cavall, 38 Mountain Ash Drive, on the Health Board, 22 years. And I was a postmaster and I worked for the registry, so I know politics. The last year, I put more hours in on this job and not getting paid for it than most people do on a full-time job to keep the people in the town safe, which we did. We had one of the best safe towns in the state. I don't want politics involved, and I hate giving speeches. But we do our job. We don't need anybody who has no idea about Health Board things overseeing us. And I hope everybody in here respects me and the people that work on our board. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, come on. Just work your way up.
Dennis Randall, 39 Winter Street, Kingston, Mass. Newest member of the Board of Health. I've served on the Board previously for nine years. This article is fundamentally, in my opinion, undemocratic. It removes from you your authority as sovereign citizens of this town to choose who best can serve the health needs of the Town of Kingston. Instead of five members of a Board of Health and a professional Health Agent, all concentrated and focused exclusively on the issues of health and welfare in this town, we, this article seeks to take that responsibility and assign it to the Town Administrator, who has many other things on his plate. This article has not been vetted. Nobody from the Board of Selectmen ever came before the Board of Health to discuss the article, the ramifications, and how this would roll out. This removes your authority. This weakens your authority as a citizen to choose and select who can best look out for your health and your interests. This is a solution in search of a problem. There is no reason to change it at this time, and I urge you to defeat this article. If we want to consider it again, let it properly be vetted by the Board of Selectmen. Let us understand fully the ramifications to employees, to the structure of town government. This is a surprise, abrupt change in an attempt to change our form of government in this town. Not ready for it, not now.
All right, Mr. Moderator. For the record, John J. Goslin, 1 Kennedy Road, Kingston, a 55-year resident. This article is unwise, unnecessary. You have people who are elected to do their job. Participating, these people today in this town meeting are participating in the purest form of democracy. You're not happy with people who serve? You have the ability at the election to remove them. This is upsetting to me. These people have done a decent job. I'm beginning to wonder whether this is a hijacking away from town officials. Don't allow it to happen.
Good morning. My name is Janet Wade. I'm a member of the Board of Health. I'm also a public health nurse. I've been on the Board of Health for the past three years, and I was just recently reelected. I am very proud and honored to represent all of you on the Board of Health. Ms. Enberg mentioned, and I totally agree with her, that we should not be combining health and politics. In fact, I'm the one who said it at the Board of Health meeting. I do not agree in combining health and politics. What I like to do is look at the facts. Okay? Number one, we have a brand-new health administrator who's only been in place for a few months. We have a brand-new Board of Select people who've only been in place for a few months. Okay? We have a Board of Health who has several members, Joe Kozner, our Chairman, being one of them, who's been involved with the Board of Health for many, 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 many years. Okay? We have myself, who has an extensive background in public health, over 30 years' experience. We have Heidi Whipple, who is a nurse at Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, who has given us a tremendous amount of her talent and her experience. Dennis Randall, who has served on many of the boards in this town, who has also been on the Health Board for quite a few years. We have Bill Cavall, who represents the Senior Committee here in town. As far as mentioning, this is a part-time job for us. This is not a part-time job for us. We live these jobs. Okay? Some of you may have seen me, I'm on Healthy Kingston. I have a health promotion and wellness program on PAC TV. I also do Healthy Kingston Clipboard, which is in the Kingston Reporter. Okay? I have used all the people on the Board to speak on that program. Okay? I can guarantee that every person who has ever come before this board has been treated with the respect and the time and the research that has been needed to resolve any issues that they have had. I stake my reputation on that. So what I'm saying is now is, we do have oversight. We do keep an eye on the agent. We've all been working with their hand in hand. Bill Cavall has gone out and done kitchen sanitation with her. Heidi Whipple has gone to nursing homes with her to see, to check into infection control. I've been doing immunizations in the town. Bill Cavall is almost in daily contact with her in dealing with issues in the town. So I want to give you the facts. I want you to take a look at the facts and decide for yourself. Thank you.
There's, I have people recognized. I'm going to let the town respond, and there's two more, four more minutes for this. That's why we have the consent agenda, so we can get some stuff done. Everyone who's up, I'm going to let them have a chance to speak. Sir?
Hi, I'm Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Regional School Committee, and I just stepped down from the Elementary School Committee last week. In the past year, we've had to deal with the Board of Health and the new Health Agent a few times. And there was a time earlier this year where we had some issues that we were having some parents talking to us, but also the Health Agent, that were problematic. And I reached out to the employee, wasn't getting any response. So I went to the Town Hall to speak to the person. Person wasn't there. Spoke with the Town, the Selectmen's Office, the head of HR. There wasn't anything that they could do. And this was a direct employee-report type of thing that an in-person, in-the-building supervisor would have been able to handle, and it wasn't handled. So, and that's happened a few times this year. I think having a direct report to the Town Administrator makes a lot of sense. And normally, if we didn't have this happen in this past year, I would definitely be on the same side as what I'm hearing from other people, that it maybe wouldn't be a good idea. But I think, I really think, based on my experience, I think it would be a good idea as long as the Board of Health and the Board of Assessors still had control of their policies and sort of generic operations. But the day-to-day supervisory would be through the Town Administrator. So, thank you.
Heidi?
Hi, I'm Heidi Whipple. I introduced myself earlier. I am a member of your elected Board of Health. I am a nurse. I've been a nurse for 20 years now. I bring a vast experience to this position. I'm going to disagree with what Eric just said, because you know what? He called me, and we did deal with it. And we did recognize the issue, and we remedied it. We have a brand-new Health Agent working under us, and we're helping her grow and become the Health Agent she can be. Growing pains in the middle of a pandemic? We're going to have them. They're going to be a little worse than usual. But as a board, we've come together. We meet weekly or bi-weekly, depending on what the needs of the board are. And depending on what our Health Agent needs. Our Health Agent reaches out to her board members on a regular basis. We are here and available, and we are your voices. If you take this away from the Board of Health, you are going to lose your voice, and it will now become the Town Administrator's job to be your voice. He is a hired physician by your Board of Selectmen. It's your choice, but I'm going to suggest that you vote no on this and keep the power within the people. We are here to hear you, and we are here to work hard for you. Thank you.
Good morning. This is Keith Hickey, the Kingston Town Administrator. I want to speak briefly, if I could, on this particular article. There's really two issues involved here. The oversight in the, of the actual individuals and the implementation and, and the oversight of the actual state laws, whether it be Board of Health or Board of Assessor. What I've heard here this morning, frankly, is a, in my mind, a scare tactic from members of the Board of Health. There is no interest from myself nor the Board of Selectmen, and this article does not provide the transfer of power on health-related issues or assessing-related issues to the Town Administrator. The only thing that this article is requesting is that the oversight of the employee be under the Town Administrator, who's in the office on a day-to-day basis overseeing almost every town employee hired by the community. I don't project or portray myself to be an expert in health nor in assessing. Those responsibilities will remain with the Board of Health and the Board of Assessing. I heard this morning that the Board of Health is, has, treats everybody respectfully and appropriately, and I don't disagree with that at all, except in some cases for their employee. And I would just urge you to watch the past six months where the Board of Health meetings, to get a sense of what that means. So I'm asking, or making sure people are aware today that really the only thing we're trying to change here is who manages the employee, who provides the support, the oversight, and potential discipline to those employees. The Board of Health and the Board of Assessors will still administer and oversee the disciplines that both boards are responsible for, with no interference and no authority from the Town Administrator to supersede that. Thank you.
Right to the microphone there, sir. Can you state your name and address, please?
Dan Saber, 23 Page Avenue in beautiful Rocky Nook. For me, this issue is deeply person. I serve...
I served 16 years, along with Mr. Randall, Mr. Kazner, and others, and it was a joy to serve on that Board. So let's go back to see where it all started. It started at some point, and it moved along, and it's where it is right now. But how did we get here? In the early 80s, the Board of Selectmen went from a three-member Board to a five-member Board, and so did the Kingston Board of Health, went to five members. I was fortunate to serve as one of them. Then the Selectmen came and created a town government study committee. They wanted to know what the priorities should be for the upcoming years for the town, and I served on that commission. What we came away with was we needed a Town Administrator, not a Town Manager and not a Town Minister that acts as a manager. So since there's so much involvement with the Town Administrator here, let's take a look at where we've been with Town Administrators throughout the years, beginning in the 80s. Some of these names you may remember. If you can get 10 out of 12, you're a genius. Bob Reed, he was our first. Then there was a second one that nobody could think of, but they were there. So that's the second one. George Shaw.
Sir, can we just go to your feelings, what you want to say about the article?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I understand the history, but if you can get to your point as what you want to say in terms of this article.
I still don't know what he's talking about.
I don't...
Well, you want me to hurry up and...
If we can get...
I'm getting to it.
Thank you.
George Shaw, Doris Height, Nancy Howlett, Patricia Whalen, Jill Myers, Kevin Donovan. Kevin served the longest time, eight years. Jim Thomas, Robert Fennessey, Tom Coulter, and God love you, Keith. You're next. Throughout the years, there's been times when the Selectmen have wanted to take over the Board of Health, not just the Agent, but the entire Board. That never passed. You're right, there shouldn't be politics. Politics was never an aspect of the Health Board when it came to terms with the Selectmen. They were interested in one thing, the town, public health, and the love of the town. Let me speak lovingly, if I may, to the Selectmen. You're young, and I think it's great, it's wonderful, and we attract people along the There was no real promotion of this article. The Boards that are most affected by it really didn't have a handle on it. We've heard more tonight about the article than had been heard throughout the period of time leading up to this meeting, and that really is not proper. I'll conclude by saying, please vote against this article, and I would end with a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. "In politics, nothing happens by accident. If it does happen, you can bet it was planned that way."
Information, if someone has something new that's not already been said, I'll take anything new.
Can we move the article?
I'll take a vote on it. Do you have anything new? Something new? If it's already been said, we've heard it. If you have something new, I'm gonna hold that, but I'm gonna take that. I have your motion. I'm gonna let them finish a minute or less. Something new information, go ahead.
Jessica, I oppose this article. That's not to say that there's not merit to certain elements that are trying to be accomplished. I do think that day-to-day management and HR issues are best handled by an HR office, but the process that went about to get us here didn't include at the table the people that are being affected by this article, and that really doesn't sit well with me. Also, if it is a good policy, it should be applied evenly across all Boards, instead of seemingly targeting two Boards and not affecting others. So I just want to step back and help people join us at the table, acknowledge certain things that we can solve and move forward in a better way, and not make people feel like that the power is being taken away from them. Their power was given to them by the people through an election, and I respect the autonomy of the elected Boards.
Dawn.
Dawn Alkenbury, and I just wanted to say, Lorraine said it, you know, best, so I'm not gonna harp down that, but this is for the employees, and as Kim mentioned earlier, two previous employees in both of these offices said that this should be happening.
Well, speaking for our employees...
Something new that we haven't heard already.
I'm sorry?
Do you have any new information?
It is.
Okay, let's, thank you.
Speaking for our employees, we don't want it. In conclusion, what I would like to say to you is, we have medical professionals on the Board of Health. We have a wide variety of experience. We're in constant communication with our Health Agent on a daily basis. There's been no problem here that we know, there is no problem here. You voted for us before. You put us in these positions. We accepted them. That created a trust. No one has broken that trust. Please vote for us again today by voting no on this article. Thank you very much.
Motion to move the question, do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, does anyone want to be heard? Can you be heard? No. No, no. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we will, the motion doesn't carry, we will take a vote. So Article 25 in your book, the Board of Selectmen revoked this. Their vote is now three to two. The Finance Committee revoked their vote, and correct me if I'm wrong, Finance Committee is one to three. So all those in favor of Article 25, say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion fails. What are we on to? Article 26 is not being moved. If you want to put it to a vote, move to pass over Article 26, do I have a second? All those in favor of not moving Article 26, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, passed over. That takes us to Article number 27.
Beach Road. I move that the town accept the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c) as printed in the warrant. This article provides for a mechanism for reducing the speed to 25 miles per hour in thickly settled or business districts. Thickly settled or business districts are defined as contiguous stretches of land where the average distance between dwellings is less than 200 feet for a distance of a quarter mile or more. Further, state highways would be excluded from this provision. There are limited areas in town where this provision will apply, but a yes vote here will simply put a tool in the toolbox so that upon the recommendation of police and highway officials, the Board of Selectmen has the ability to establish a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit in the interest of public safety.
Second? Okay, open it up. Thank you.
Elaine Fiori, 60 Cole Street. Yeah, I've read the Mass. General Law myself, though it wasn't available for this, and it does say, in the interest of public, basically it says, "interest of public safety, Board of Selectmen can impose a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit in thickly settled or business district that are not a state highway." I think this is premature, because this Mass. General Law does not state that the Board of Selectmen needs to work with anybody. Those areas in town have not been identified that would be affected by this. Thickly settled or business districts, to me, are the state roads. It's Route 3A, it's 106, it's 27, it's the center of town. Therefore, I don't know what the effect this would be, and from what I understand, there's a Safety Committee with two sitting Board of Selectmen on it, that part of their charge is what should be happening in a town of Kingston as far as, you know, speed limits, sidewalks, all of that. So I think this is a little premature. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I'd like to see that recommendation from the Safety Committee, which does have the Police Chief involved, Board of Selectmen, and I believe the Highway Superintendent in and out of that as well. So I think we're a little premature to provide 100% authority over putting a 25 mile speed limit on some road that's considered thickly settled. I'm not against the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit in certain areas. I think those need to be identified and vetted before we take a vote to adopt a Mass. General Law. I would suggest voting no.
I just want to say that I think that this is not premature. If anything, it's overdue. This was before the town in 2017 on the town meeting warrant. On night five of the 2017 All-Town Meeting, I mean Annual Town Meeting, the meeting adjourned for lack of quorum, so this never got to be heard by the town. This has been vetted at that time through the Planning Board, and it was brought forth by Planning Board. This has been in the works for a while, and I'm trying to bring it back before Town Meeting Body, because they never had the opportunity to vote on it. It simply gives us a tool to be able to deploy when it's recommended to us by public safety officials that this road qualifies and that it's in the public's best interest for public safety to adopt this speed limit.
Hello, James Davenport, 2 Oak Street. I'm against this. I lived in a town where they had a speed limit, 20, 25 miles an hour. You can't even drive that slow. I think if they want to do speed limits, they should just post them on certain roads, but this general authority is just gonna restrict drivers from driving a reasonable speed. Thank you.
Pine.
Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street, also working at Jones River Landing on Landing Road. In 2014, we passed an article at Town Meeting to have the Selectmen establish a 25 to 30 mile-an-hour speed limit sign on all the scenic roads in town. That was about seven of them, as I recall. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, so on Landing Road just this week, we had two trucks crashing into the bridge, that is, the railroad bridge, and the Police Department routinely go there. Not only did they crash, they hold up the street for a long time, and then they don't clean up the foam from the refrigerator truck and all that kind of stuff. I live on Elm Street, and just this morning, I'm coming down Elm Street, and even though it's posted at 30 miles an hour, nobody can stay on their right side of the road. They have to cross over the double line, because they gotta go really fast, and this is not okay. It's not okay for trucks and cars and pickup trucks and everybody to be driving around town on their phone and double lining it and going 30, 40, 50 miles an hour down these little roads. Not okay. There's information that the Selectmen have that the bridge on Elm Street does not carry more than 30 miles an hour, but do they put up a big 30 mile-an-hour sign? No, they put up a little weeny one, so you need to be actually watching the road to read the speed limit sign, or watching the road to see, oh, bridge low overhead. People are out of control. They're threatening. They're damaging the environment, and they're damaging the health of the community. It's not a livable community anymore when you live on these roads. I got people going down Elm Street like they can't wait to get to the other side of Plimpton. It's not all right, folks. Please do something. This is an opportunity to adopt a state law that Duxbury, Plymouth, and Plimpton have adopted. We're just adopting it. You're not changing anything right now. You're giving us the opportunity to have a livable community where we need it. And oh, by the way, Town Center is posted at 25, but stand there and watch and see how many people drive that way.
Yes.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland's Lane. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for putting this article on the warrant, because as Ms. Kramer did say, this was an article that was actually in the Town Meeting that was dissolved a few years ago, so it wasn't even heard, and I had lots to say about it then, and now we have been going in circles for the last several years trying to get some safety on some of these roads that are heavily traveled, specifically Howland's Lane, where there's been probably no less than six or seven major accidents on the road in the last few years, including one in my front yard that took out a telephone pole and diverted all of the traffic through even smaller streets to get back into the Nook until the pole was fixed. It would have killed me if I was in my front yard. It could have killed my family, you know, that was sitting in the front of my house. Anyway, a few months ago, the Board of Selectmen did attempt to form a Safety Committee. It's the same, several of us that are interested in helping to not control the speed in town, but to help solve the speeding issues in town, and that did include having the Police Chief in on the call, and he couldn't even address what the speed limit on my street was, because the fact of the matter is, it's unknown. Nobody seems to know. So if they don't know what the speed limit is, then how are they going to enforce the speed limit on my street? Which means that there's two yellow signs, one before and one after the bridge on Howland's Lane that say 25 mile an hour. There's one other sign throughout the road that says 30 miles per hour for the curve, and then there's very few signs posted throughout the Nook telling you what the speed limit is. If this is adopted, then most likely Howland's Lane will become 25 miles per hour, and with what's going on next week with a nine-unit condo development that they want to put on my street, that will be step one into helping to control that traffic and those additional cars that are going to be on that road with all of the children, all of the sidewalks, all of the animals, everything that's going on. So I urge you to please vote yes on this article, so that we can have some kind of continuity within the town of what the speed limit actually is, so that the police can enforce it. And then maybe once they start enforcing the speed, people will realize that they need to slow down, because it is for the safety of all of us, including themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Sarah Alter, 41 Landing Road. Oh, really? Okay. Sarah Alter, 41 Landing Road. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, I've been in town 37 years now at that same address. I live right next to the railroad overpass. I have been trying for about 35 years to get traffic to slow down on the road. We've been involved, I and my neighbors have been involved for years. We did finally, with a lot of work, get that article passed in 2014, which said the speed on Landing Road should be 25 miles an hour. I have just about given up on trying to do anything. When I heard that the Selectmen had appointed a group to study this, I wrote, I emailed two Selectmen who did not respond to my email, saying, "I would like to be involved in this." So after all these years and all these promises, I'd like to know, why can't we pass this thing so that it's clear? Anyway, amen.
Thank you. Any other debate? Seeing none, this was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All.
Paul and Paul, can we count it? If you were an aye vote in favor of passing the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, please take out your orange cards and raise it up. Go ahead. All those opposed, can you take out your orange card and raise them? I can see that from here. Forty-six. Go ahead. The motion carries, and will the Chief please give me a warning the first time?
Do you want to announce 44 to 19? It carries 44.
Yes, the numbers were 44, 46 to 19.
44 to 19.
Yep. We're moving on to 28. Who's that? Yep. The 28 is being passed over. So all those in favor, can I get a second? I'm passing it over. All those in favor of not hearing the motion and have it passed over, can I... Say aye? All those opposed? We passed it. Just going back to the Consent Agenda Form Number Three, there's three articles, 29, 30, and 31, all favorable by the Board of Selection, five to zero. I'm going to move them as one motion. If you want me to hold it, just yell a hold and we'll debate it. Article 29 is the Amendment to the General Bylaws, Chapter Four, Article Four, Non-substantive Renumbering. Article 30 is an amendment to the General Bylaws, Chapter 10, Article Five, Animal Control. Article 31 is an amendment to the General Bylaws, Chapter 20, Article One, Sewer Bylaw. Again, I'll call them out again. If you want to hold one, we'll pull it out. If not, we'll vote them as one. 29? 30? 31? Do I have a second on the Consent Agenda? Anyone? Opened up? Well, not opened up because you didn't hold it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the chickens. Who is presenting Article 33? Come forward. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Quinn. I live at 119 South Street, and we filed a petition to add to the Kingston General Bylaws. The goal of this ordinance is to retain roosters that are well-managed and maintain good neighbor relations while being able to provide some guidance and, if necessary, take action against individuals who are not good managers of their roosters.
Read the motion. Thank you.
I will read the entire motion. Move to amend the Town of Kingston General Bylaws that roosters shall be kept between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. within fully enclosed structures designed to minimize noise. The person shall not allow or permit such rooster at any time to annoy another person's reasonable right to peace of privacy by making loud or continuous noise when such noise is plainly audible between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. at a distance of 150 feet from the premises where the rooster is kept, or between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and say, 7:00 a.m. at a distance of 50 feet from the premise where the rooster is kept, or when such noise is continuous in excess of 10 minutes. Revisions of this ordinance may be enforced through the Office of Building Commissioner in the Town of Kingston, Massachusetts. This office is empowered to issue a written warning at the first offense and impose a fine of 50 for a second violation, a fine of $100 for a third violation, a fine of $200 for violations beyond the third.
Is there a second? If you would like to say anything else about your motion? Sir, would you like to say anything else about your motion? Would you like to say anything else?
Yes, I know that Kingston is a right-to-farm community, and we set up this petition to make the least impact, but to try to have as much of a good neighbor policy, particularly with my own personal neighbor.
Ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name's Jean Landis-Norman, 84 Wolf Pond Road. I'm a member of the Agricultural Commission. John Webble, our chairman, was unable to be here today due to family issues, and he has asked me to speak on behalf of the Agricultural Commission. On May 6, the member of the AgCom discussed this warrant article and heard from a mover of this article. The members voted to not support this article as adherence and enforcement would prove to be very problematic. Acknowledging current situations and anticipated future situations involving livestock led the group to decide to research state guidelines as well as those in surrounding right-to-farm communities. The goal of the AgCom is to work with all the other town groups as well as residents to develop usable guidelines that are reasonable for all parties. The AgCom members certainly empathize with residents who have been subjected to unreasonable noise caused by crowing roosters. However, we are a right-to-farm community, and our bylaw does explain some of the issues you might face in such a community. We do believe that most issues involving agriculture can be resolved through discussion and reasonable accommodation. In other words, residents should strive to be good neighbors and understand the realities and responsibilities of living in an agricultural community. We ask that the voters not support this article and allow the AgCom, along with other departments and residents, to develop any needed guidelines regarding livestock. Thank you.
Don Alkenbry. Although I am against supporting this article, I do want to stress that I feel one of the major issues with it is it's too broad. There's no real guidance on how you restrict the noise, what noise pollution it is. I think there's just too many concerns, and it's too hard to manage that, so...
Sir? Anyone else want to be heard? All those in favor of Article 30? There you are, I'm sorry.
Hi, Susan Ripley, 15 Summer Street. I just want to point out a few things about roosters, in case you're not aware. Roosters crow for specific reasons. They are there to protect their flock, and when you're hearing them crowing, there's usually something going on so that they're alerting the flock to what's going on, or they're alerting predators not to come near them because they have a rooster. The other thing is, if you try and enclose a rooster inn with a soundproof kind of room, you're going to kill them. The roosters will die. Roosters and chickens need lots and lots of ventilation. So this is a very bad, inhumane thing to do. We are a right-to-farm community, and I'm sorry if you have a bad neighbor, yes, we should address that. But doing this overreach is kind of ridiculous, and I think you'll have other things coming down in this town if you try to pass this. Anyways, thank you very much. I hope you vote against it.
Anybody else? All those in favor of Article 33, say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion does not carry. A brief announcement before I ask for a final motion?
To discuss that Mr. Eric Cron has stepped down from the Kingston School Committee, and we will be appointing a new school committee member for his one-year term. We are asking anyone that is interested to do a letter of intent to be sent to Patricia Tucker at the Selectmen's Office, and we will be appointing this new person with the Kingston School Committee and the Selectmen on the June 8 meeting. Thank you.
Did I get a second? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.